2018 Port Orchard City Council Meeting to Order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time I would call for a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda.
Just for quick clarification, do we need to take any kind of action designating Sean as the mayor pro temp?
Wouldn't be mayor pro temp.
Yes, we do.
Mayor pro temp.
Yes, that would be the appropriate thing is to officially recognize him.
We designate Sean as the acting mayor for this evening's meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to have myself lead tonight's meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? There we go. Move on to the approval of the agenda.
Mr. Interim Pro Temp Mayor would like to...
Act.
Move item, Consent Item 4F to the Business.
Okay.
Item 7H.
7H. And that is interlocal agreement.
And that's one below F.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to amend tonight's agenda by moving Consent Agenda F to the Business Item H. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Back to the main motion, or to approval of agenda.
I move to make the agenda as amended.
We have a motion to approve tonight's agenda as amended.
Second.
Second. We'll call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you. And we'll move on to citizens' comments. This is the point of the meeting where citizens can speak to anything on tonight's agenda. Anyone like to address? No? Okay. We will move on to the Consent Agenda.
Mayor, I move to approve the Consent Agenda as modified.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Consent Agenda as amended. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Great. We have no presentation tonight. We have no public hearing tonight, so we'll move straight to our Business Items. First item tonight is the adoption of an ordinance adopting the revised Exhibit A to the interim self-storage facilities ordinance. Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you. On April 24th, 2018, the City Council adopted an interim self-storage facilities ordinance and overlay map, Ordinance 015-18, that designates limited areas in which new self-storage facilities can be developed, effective through a period of 12 months. Corresponding changes to the land use table in Port Orchard Municipal Code Section 20.46.030 were made to distinguish between indoor and outdoor storage, with the latter being restricted to the employment industrial and office zone for the duration of the interim ordinance. The interim ordinance also amended provisions of related self-storage as an accessory use to residential uses only by allowing self-storage as an accessory use to larger residential projects and by limiting the size of self-storage facilities as an accessory use. Subsequently, the City Council proposed to adopt a revised interim storage ordinance which corrects Exhibit A by indicating that self-storage is a permitted use instead of a conditional use in the employment, industrial, and office zone as shown on Exhibit A which is attached to the ordinance. On June 5th, 2018, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the amended interim ordinance with the proposed revisions and voted unanimously to recommend that council adopt the interim self-storage regulations with the revision to Exhibit A as presented. And I'd just like to note that it's a one-letter change in the zoning table from a C to a P and that all of our industrial land, except for shoreline industrial, is in the industrial park. The shoreline industrial is regulated under the Shoreline Master Program in addition to our zoning code and so storage isn't allowed as a water-dependent use as our code exists already. So, this would, we actually took in an application for a outdoor self-storage facility in the industrial park a few days after the ordinance passed and we realized that they have to spend a whole lot of money on a conditional use permit that we probably don't need to take through the process because it's a, you know, it's in the industrial park.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Councilwoman Loukarelli.
I move to approve an ordinance adopting the revised Exhibit A to the interim self-storage facilities ordinance as presented.
Second.
Second. By Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Any discussion? All right, seeing that there is none, we'll call for the vote. All those in favor of approving an ordinance adopting the revised Exhibit A to the interim self-storage facilities ordinance as presented, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to Item Number B this evening, Adoption of an Ordinance Adopting Revisions to the Port Orchard Municipal Code Title 12 for Consistency with Resolution Number 030-17 Administrative Fee Schedule. Mr. Bond.
Thank you. In May...
In May 2017, the City Council approved the city's current administrative fees for the Departments of Community Development and Public Works. City staff have become aware that several sections of Title 12 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code, which set forth fee and assessments, are incorrect and inconsistent with the current methods used by the city to assess fees per Resolution 03017. It is therefore proposed to revise these sections of Title 12 for consistencies with the city's current administrative fee schedule. And I'll just note that the existing code is from all the way back in the 1960s and hasn't been amended since then and so the permit fee is $5 for a street excavation permit, I believe. And there's, we're just changing everything to be set by resolution rather than being set by code. There was also a provision dealing with deducting amounts from somebody's performance bond, which is a very strange way of doing things. It seems very outdated. And so this is, this is just one bit of housekeeping in advance of updating our fee resolution that we wanted to take care of before we bring the fee resolution forward in July.
Thank you. You have a motion?
G.
I move to adopt an ordinance adopting revisions to Title 12 of Port Orchard Municipal Code as presented.
Second by Councilmember Chang. Discussion? All right, seeing that there isn't any, we will move to the vote. To adopt an ordinance adopting the revisions to Title 12 of the Port Orchard Municipal Code as presented. All those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to Item C, Adoption of a Resolution Approving a Contract with BHC Consultants for the 2012-2020 Well Number 13 Final Ad Ready Design Permitting Bid Support and Construction Administration Services. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Your Honor, Councilmembers. On August 15th, 2017, given procurement concerns during the 2017 audit, City of Port Orchard terminated contract C076-14 with BHC Consultants for the Well 10 Amendment to Well 13 project. On March 23rd and March 30th, 2018, the city's Public Works Department published a new request for qualifications for the 2018-2020 Well Number 13 Final Ad Ready Design Permitting Bid Support and Construction Administration Services. By the published April 12th, 2018 deadline, two statements of qualifications were received. On April 30th, 2018, the city interviewed both firms and based upon qualifications received in the interview process, BHC Consultants was once again selected. On May 2nd, 2018, public works staff completed the mandatory bidder responsibility checklist and on June 19th, 2018, the city finally received an acceptable scope of work, budget, and milestones in amount not to exceed $917,910. Staff recommends adoption of Resolution C022-18, therefore approving contract, or Resolution 02218, thereby approving contract number C03918 with BHC Consultants for the 2018-2020 Well Number 13 Final Ad Ready Design Permitting Bid Support and Construction Administration in an amount not to exceed $917,910 and documenting the professional services procurement procedures. I would also like to note that in the previous contract, which was basically at about a million dollars initially for that scope of work, this new fee is only about $70,000 over where they were at with their current spend down. But with the new design, moving into Well 13, not doing Perry, not doing Maple, to the extent that we were doing it before, we are anticipating that the actual construction dollar amount will drop down so that we're still well within our original $6 million. It's anticipated that we'll be, the project will still be within the $6 million loan.
Councilmember Loukarelli.
I move to adopt Resolution Number 022-18, thereby approving contract number C039-18 with BHC Consultants for the 2018 to 2020 Well Number 13 Final Ad Ready Design Permitting Bid Support and Construction Administration in an amount not to exceed $917,910 and documenting the professional services procurement procedures.
You have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Any discussion? Okay, seeing that there isn't any, we will vote to adopt Resolution Number 022-18, thereby approving contract number C039-18 with BHC Consultants for the 2018-2020 Well Number 13 Final Ad Ready Design Permitting Bid Support and Construction Administration in an amount not to exceed $917,910 and documenting the professional services procurement procedures. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None. Moving on. Next item will be the Approval of Change Order Number 3 to Contract Number 037-17 with Active Construction, Inc. for the Tremont Street Widening Project. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you. On June 27th, 2017, the City, Port Orchard City Council approved Contract Number C037-17 with Active Construction for the Tremont Street Widening Project. On April 24th, 2018, council authorized the mayor to execute Change Order 1, being the 16-inch diameter sanitary sewer force main, changing condition not to exceed amount of $250,000. On May 8th, 2018, council approved Change Order Number 1A, which amended the actual Change Order Number 1 cost of work. It reduced it back down to $242,906.33 and authorized the mayor to execute Change Order Number 2, being the realignment of the Golden Pond Kaiser Permenta 4-inch diameter sanitary sewer force mains along Partery Avenue, where there were changes in condition not to exceed in an amount of $150,000. Just as a side note, that work is not yet performed. We're still in the independent estimate and negotiation phase. It looks like that's going to be more like $100,000 rather than $150,000. So we'll come back, I'm hoping, at the July, the second meeting in July with Amendment 2A. The Amendment to Change Order, oh, well, I guess I kind of didn't read it. So the Amendment to 2 is not in process. Or is not ready to process. Tonight's action, being authorization to proceed immediately with Change Order Number 3, is associated with a not-to-exceed amount of $116,889.50. As mentioned at a previous meeting, this change order approval process between the contractor and the city's CM team and washed-out Iowa local programs will not occur in time for this regular meeting and cannot wait. Therefore, the city's Public Works Department is requesting authorization for the mayor to execute Change Order 3 with Active Construction in an amount not to exceed $116,889.50 at this time. Again, once the actual Change Order approval process is complete, the corrected Change Order 3 will be brought back for final ratification if necessary. And please recall that this Change Order 3 had to do with the illumination of SR16 that we found out that the meter base was actually up by the rotary sign up at Canyon Court. So, it was definitely not on our radar during the design process. So, staff recommends that the City Council authorize the mayor to execute Change Order Number 3 with Active Construction in an amount not to exceed $116,889.50 with the potential corrected Change Order to 3 to be brought back for council for final ratification.
Thank you. Mr. Lawson.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute Change Order Number 3 with Active Construction, in an amount not to exceed $116,889.50 with the corrected Change Order Number 3 to be brought back to the council for final ratification.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Loukarelli. Discussion? Okay, seeing that there is none, we'll be voting to authorize the mayor to execute Change Order Number 3 with Active Construction, Inc. in an amount not to exceed $116,889.50 with the corrected Change Order Number 3 to be brought back to council for final ratification. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Moving on to Business Item Number E, An Approval of a Contract with Northwest Urban Law, PLLC, for Land Use Legal Counsel. And this is me. Let me just get to that page. Okay. So, the City of Port Orchard is seeking additional legal services to address the various project needs. The city has contracted to work with Northwest Urban Law, PLLC, to serve as special counsel. The firm will work on specifically assigned projects on an as-needed basis. Was it Noah?
It said, "Mayor" on the agenda. I'm sorry about that. I'm reading it right here. It says "mayor." Noah, go ahead and take over.
You can do this however you want. I'm totally fine. Mayor, council members.
Trick me.
I'm gonna pick up where the Mayor Pro Temp left off. So, Business Item 70 is the Approval of a Contract for Northwest Urban Law. The City of Port Orchard is seeking additional legal services to address the various project needs. The city has contracted to work with Northwest Urban Law to serve as special counsel. This firm will work on specifically assigned projects on an as-needed basis and compensate at an hourly rate. There will be no retainer structure for this contract and this contract has a maximum of not to exceed a value of $60,000 with a term going through the end of fiscal year 2019. Staff recommends approval of the awarded contract to Northwest Urban Law for attorney services.
Councilmember Lawson.
I move to adopt a contract with Northwest Urban Law.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chang. Any discussion? No, I know we're gonna be jumping back to Number F here in just a few minutes. Do you want to speak to the kind of the financial balancing between those two?
Sure. So, F is being adjusted to help offset the adoption of E. Again, E, we're hiring special counsel to focus on specifically assigned projects. Again, there is no retainer. Where F will reduce the retainer to help offset against the additional costs. So, trying to keep those costs down, but seeking the counsel for specifically assigned projects.
Great, thank you. Further discussion on this item? We will call for the vote. And we will be voting on the approval of an awarded contract to Northwest Urban Law for attorney services. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Onto Item F. We have an Approval of Amendment Number 2 to Contract Number 018-16 with Lighthouse Law Group, PLLC, for city attorney services. Mr. Crocker.
Thank you. In the City of Port Orchard, city attorney services are contracted with Lighthouse Law Group. In recent months and in conjunction with the new attorney firm we're hiring on for special projects, we are considering a new retainer model, which has been adjusted through 7F. Under this new retainer model, the city would agree to a retainer of 50 hours for $8,750 per month for services of the attorneys within the contract. This amendment to the retainer model benefits the city by reducing the cost of the current retainer by approximately $3,500. Staff recommends approval of proposed Amendment Number 2 to the contract with the Lighthouse Law Group for city attorney services.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Lawson.
I move to approve Amendment Number 2 to Contract Number 018-16, Lighthouse Law Group for the city attorney services as presented.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. Discussion? Okay, again, seeing that there's no discussion, we'll be voting to approve Amendment Number 2 to Contract Number 018-16 with Lighthouse Law Group for city attorney services as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Onto Item Number G. We'll have a discussion regarding the Hanley property, proposed Kitsap County Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna speak off of the staff report on this. At our June 12th meeting, we discussed sending a letter to the county concerning a proposed comprehensive plan amendment known as the Hanley MAP Amendment. I think that the letter presented was ultimately moved and I sent it to the county at the direction of the council, but I think that the discussion that the council had and the text of the letter didn't quite align and so my understanding is that there was a desire to revisit this issue. So I have worked with Mayor Patanzu to draft revisions, which are shown in red line and I guess we are looking for a motion to send a revised letter to the county and so this would replace the previous letter, which I would withdraw and resubmit a new letter as shown. So, if there are any questions about the content of the letter, I'm happy to try to address those.
Mr. Lawson.
Mr. Mayor, I move to direct staff to finalize and send the revised attached letter to Kitsap County regarding the Hanley Comprehensive Plan Amendment as presented.
Second.
Motion maker, any discussion?
Staff covered it well.
Yeah, I'd like to perhaps add one thing on here. I was actually able to speak with Mr. Hanley and they are really in favor of the concept of trying to move towards this light industrial area, but they just want to use this for kind of the lay-down area. And I'm just wondering, in the very last paragraph here, just prior to the last sentence, if we could insert, kind of reemphasize that the city could support the rezoning to light industrial versus having it, I think they feel that's important that to have the support of the city to recommend this alternative solution and so instead of maybe having the closing of this letter really restating our opposition, it's restating our opposition to the commercial zoning, but that we could, once again, just repeat the fact that we would be willing to look at supporting the light industrial concept.
Doesn't it say that?
It just doesn't conclude that way.
The red line version says the city could support the area-wide zoning to light industrial with regular boundaries rather than site-specific.
I'm just talking about the last paragraph. It's just restating it once again because it closes of just basically saying we're restating our opposition. So just to emphasize, just reemphasize, it does say it. We are repeating ourselves. But the whole paragraph's basically repetitious.
Whatever. I think you make a statement, but...
I concur and I think Sean... Or Mr. Mayor Pro Temp Interim. Perhaps the portion of the really long paragraph that starts with "however", maybe that sentence could be the final paragraph.
Right. And that would solve the same thing.
Okay. So we wouldn't be restating it again, but it would be the last.
I think I understand what you're going for and if that is acceptable as a friendly amendment to all the other council members, I can make that happen.
And I don't know that we, do we need to make an amendment, do you think, to this? Or we're just approving you to authorize a letter? I don't think we need to...
We don't even necessarily need a motion on this, so I think you can vote to approve it and I will do what has been discussed tonight.
Well, the motion did say the revised attached, so...
We have to.
I think it would be worth a friendly amendment, or I would certainly accept it as a second agreement.
Okay.
I agree with that. I had a question.
Yes.
So next, since we sent the previous letter, did we get a response or any question from the county, just out of curiosity?
No, they don't typically respond to these. They just put them into the record for the decision-maker to consider as testimony.
Okay, thank you.
So, it'll be withdrawn and I assume it'll still appear in the record but be struck through and replaced with a new version and they'll have a table of contents that shows version 1 withdrawn, you know, version 2 submitted on June 26th or 7th or whenever. I get it up there.
Thank you. Would you like to go on record by amending the motion?
Sure. Do I have to restate it? I move to amend the letter by pulling out the sentence beginning with "however" and making it the last paragraph. Subject to any grammatical change that staff may see as appropriate.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rosa Pepe. We'll be voting on the amendment. All those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? And then back to the main motion. Is there further conversation, discussion? We will be voting on to direct staff to finalize and send the revised attached and amended letter to the Kitsap County regarding the Hanley Comprehensive Plan Amendment as presented. All those in favor, signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. This time we'll move to Item 7H, which originally appeared as Consent Agenda, Item F. And it's the Approval of an Interlocal Agreement with the Kitsap Conservation District for Low-Impact Development and Water Quality Improvements. Mr. Dorsey.
Thank you, Your Honor, council members. In the interest of reducing costs associated with stormwater retrofit projects and generally improving water quality, the City of Port Orchard and the Kitsap Conservation District intend to enter into an interlocal agreement to work together to increase and promote low-impact development practices within city limits. This agreement will increase opportunities for collaboration and resource pooling for city capital projects and will also aid private property owners within the city to improve best management practices for stormwater runoff. This agreement may include, but is not limited to, design, materials, and/or installation services for rain gardens by retention facilities located within city's jurisdiction for both city and private projects. City projects will be managed and budgeted on a case-by-case basis pending city council approval and private development projects will be managed separately from the city and conducted through the Conservation District directly. Staff recommends that the city council authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with the Kitsap Conservation District for low-impact development and water quality improvements. And as I mentioned to Councilman Chang earlier, tonight's action doesn't commit any dollars at all. This is simply allowing the ILA. Any project that might come forth would come back to council on a case-by-case basis with a complete cost breakdown. So, this is, this is almost like, you know, you prove us to go apply for a grant and only if we get the grant do we come back when we actually have numbers. So, there's no way to estimate whether this will be one project or 100 projects, what each project might cost. Those individual projects will come back if we have a project.
Does the table's potential for a partnership? Do we have a motion? Councilmember Rosa Pepe.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with Kitsap Conservation District for low-impact development with water quality improvements.
Second.
I second, yeah.
Okay, second by Councilmember Chang. Discussion?
I certainly support the interlocal agreement, but one reason I pulled it off was I was wondering if there is a little more information about the types of projects that private property owners might get some sort of assistance or... As you know, I've received an email, which I forwarded to Public Works, where I think a condominiumist wondered if they put in like a rain garden, would they receive any kind of benefit to their stormwater rates? The answer was no, which, you know, I...
Right, and that's...
But what sort of assistance can people expect here when we're saying we would aid private property owners? Can you give an example of maybe the kinds of things they could expect?
That would, those sorts of tasks would be through the Conservation District. That wouldn't be necessarily with the city. They have all sorts of programs through the Conservation District on putting in rain gardens and buyer retention. But, the, you know, we've mentioned a number of times, we've, over the years, since we started the drainage, storm drainage utility, the difference between mitigation and the more philanthropic drainage utility. So, we have all sorts of developments that have, or a condominium or a McCormick Division Parcel D. When you have a drainage facility that's mitigating, taking trees down and putting something hard-surfaced in its place, that's what the mitigation does. It has nothing to do with the storm drainage utility. Storm drainage utility that you get assessed for hard surfaces has to do with... Storm drainage utility that you get assessed for hard surfaces has to do with the city as a whole. It cleans catch basins, it cleans streets, it tracks the total maximum daily load of fecal count in the bay, it looks for illicit discharge. It's a more broad reaching, and again, I use the term more philanthropic, you know, it's a carbon footprint. We all, we all drive to Safeway, and our car drops oil on the road, or antifreeze, or brake drums get fine metals on the road. The storm drainage utility covers that. It's not mitigation, and so that's why Public Works responded to no, is they're two totally different things. They're.
Well, thank you, I'd just like to be able to translate it, because a lot of people like to see what benefit they get, and it's hard to sometimes say, well, everyone's being assessed this fee, and your benefit is more a collective benefit than an individual benefit. I just wanted to make sure, you know, if they say, well, what can I expect? It's like, well, thank you for the explanation.
Are there further discussion on this item? Okay, we'll call for a vote to authorize the mayor to execute an interlocal agreement with the Kitsap Conservation District for low impact development and water quality improvements. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, we will move on to the reports of council committees. Mr. Lawson, Finance?
Just to announce that two of the three members and the finance director agreed that we would be meeting on July 24th at 5:15 here at City Hall.
Perfect, we'll add that to.
The PM or PM?
The schedule. 5:15 PM, July 24th, that's a Tuesday here at City Hall. Economic Development and Tourism, the next meeting appears to be July 9, 2018, 9:30 AM.
That's correct.
Any additional reports?
None.
Okay.
We talked last week, that last meeting about it.
Thank you. Utilities.
The next meeting is July 16th here at 9:30 AM.
And Sewer Advisory.
And that is July 18th, 6:30 PM, at the sewer plant.
Thank you. Land Use, I saw some emails going around that two of the three members of the committee will be unable to attend on July 2nd, and a date is being looked at right now, and we'll report that back as soon as we know what that date would be from our chair. Lodging Tax Advisory, I don't believe we have any updates there, have you heard otherwise?
No.
Okay, Festival of Chimes and Lights.
Yes, I will give a report of our last meeting when we have the full council, and our, actually, our next meeting is July 16th at 3:30 here at City Hall.
Hard to believe that, we're moving forward with chimes and lights already.
Oh, we've got so much to do.
The days are getting shorter, so we better be prepared.
It's crazy, yeah.
Any outside agency committee that may have occurred over the last couple of weeks? Okay, seeing that there's none, we'll move to the report of department heads. Mr. Dorsey.
Just very briefly, so, Segment 3, Bay Street, we haven't seen much activity so far, just kind of driving by, but within, within the month, you'll see, walls are gonna start being poured, probably next week, and then you'll see those big power poles in front of the Marley and Comfort Inn, those will be gone, so that'll be pretty dramatic. And out on Tremont, if you've driven through that, you'll see that power's been wrecked out, and by next week, I think all of the internet phone will be off, so you'll see all those poles away, so it'll be dramatic. And then, by the end of July, you're gonna start seeing curb and gutter, and so, we're going to, in August, have, they flew the original, with a drone, original path, and it's a, it's a established waypoint, and so, our hope is in one of the August meetings or September, we'll, council meeting, we'll show that fly through, and then we'll have another one in August that follows that same path, so you can see kind of the changes, so that's gonna be pretty cool.
Have they been changing? It appears they've changed the grades for the South Kitsap Boulevard.
Yeah, it's, you, what you saw about a month ago, so we're like, almost completely out of the ground. We've got that forest main work, and then maybe a water line that we're gonna do on Pottery down to Roland in May, or down to May, but it's, in general, and we've got a little bit of water line left from Pottery to Port Orchard Boulevard, but we're 90% out of the ground, so what you'll start seeing at this point is all the surface stuff, and so, a big part of South Kitsap Boulevard was, as you notice, things were like really high around you, that's because we're bringing it up three feet, but it's, we're bringing it up to grade, so that's the three foot fill-ish at South Kitsap, and then at Pottery, we've been doing all the work to start bringing that down a little bit more, so, and then the grades in between the two are very close to grade, all the walls are built, so rockeries and the earth retained walls that you really can't see, because they're kind of on the downhill side, those are all done, so, yeah, I think August, September, you'll really start seeing everything take shape, with all the poles out of the way, with the curb and gutter and sidewalk going in. The goal is still to get the first course of paving done this year, so that we're driving on that surface, and then you'll have that final inch and a half below the curb line, and so that then we transition to landscaping. You'll also probably notice that we've got, from 16 to South Kitsap Boulevard, we've actually got the, some of the final streetlights in, that's intentional, so that we'll have some lighting, because the lighting went away with South Kitsap Boulevard, and we'll take the signals out, so, so everything's kind of moving towards getting that base asphalt down for the winter, so that we can focus on landscaping, and then come back in the spring and do the final everything.
So, once that phased asphalt's down, will that road be fully?
When they, when they get the, yeah, and they'll do, because there's four lanes, they'll be moving people around to get a base down, and then move traffic onto that one, and so that'll, that'll get very, I don't think congested, but things will be moving around a lot, but once that kind of leveling course is in place, yes, then we'll be driving on that course for four or five months until everything is finished up, and then they'll do the final paving, striping, thermoplastic, signage in the spring.
Well, I was gonna introduce an ordinance to not allow it to snow this year, but pending that approval, we'll have a base that we could plow in the event we do get snow.
Yeah, that, that's the ultimate goal. We do not want to have to manage gravel or, you know, ground up asphalt, which is kind of what we have in there right now. We pulverize the road and we place that in. We don't want to manage that through the winter, if at all possible.
Good.
Just with the current traffic patterns, enclosures, and traffic's backing up quite a bit down Old Clifton towards the Industrial Park, and people are blocking the exit ramps for those people trying to turn left off of both exit ramps at the Old Clifton interchange. Do we have any signs that we could place there that just says, please do not block, you know, intersection?
We talked about that today, I mean, it's, it's no different than right out front here, when I try to get out, and you kind of sit there and you creep out, and you just hope that somebody's gonna not be an idiot and just pull right up and block you.
Right.
Yeah, it's, it's problematic, and you see that in a lot of construction zones. You just need to be aware as a driver, really. We do have the MUT CD base signage coming off the freeway. I guess we could go rent a reader board and say, hey, you know, don't be stupid and block people, but.
Don't be stupid.
It's like, don't block intersections.
We're just making our problems worse.
It'd be accidents, everybody laughing too hard, we're crushing into each other.
It's, you know, it's just construction.
Yeah.
I mean, when we're, you know, Belfer was under construction for three years, and I had to drive through that every day, and you'd have some days where, by the Dairy Queen there, people would just, you know, do like they did in the UK, it's just, in driving there, it's just normal to just, what do they call it?
Zipper.
They zipper in, and it doesn't back up. Here, it's just like, I'm not gonna let you get in front of me, you know, I'm gonna get to where I'm going one second before you. It's just a mentality difference, and there are days when it doesn't back up because everybody's zipping, and then there's other days where nobody's gonna let anybody in, and then it creates havoc, so.
So, one question, one comment. The question is, are we looking at any, because of the fact that South Kitsap and Tremont, you know, is now gravel, are you seeing any more traffic go down Pottery and Berry Lake? Because there was some discussion about, you know, possibility of putting a three-way stop in there.
We're doing that as we speak, we've already made the decision on, make it a permanent three-way stop. We already, we just met earlier in the week, or the end of last week, on looking at the school zones, so this is, it's gonna be much better, we're gonna actually have two distinct school zones, because we have this pseudo-third school zone, because Sydney Glen was using that Berry Lake crosswalk, it was outside the 300 feet, but they were sending a crossing person there, so it created this confusion for drivers, that you went into school zone, left a school zone, then you're kind of in a school zone because of the crosswalk, and then you're out, and then you're back in. Now that that'll be a permanent stop, that'll control the speeds, and you'll be able to go through the Sedgwick or Cedar Heights, go in and out.
Right.
Come to a stop, and then go in and out, so it's gonna be.
So, I heard you say it's gonna be permanent?
Permanent, we're making that a permanent change.
Okay.
It'll be an always stop moving forward.
Awesome.
At Berry Lake.
At Berry Lake, plus you got site distance issues, turning from Berry Lake north anyway, so it's, so out of this, you know, I think the Lippert Pottery, permanent, has, is an improvement, and I think Berry Lake, Sydney's gonna be a really good improvement.
There'll be plenty of flags to let people know.
We'll, we'll put up the traffic revisions ahead, yeah.
My comment was, I did drive through South Kitsap, I've been gone for about five days, and I was really amazed at the amount of progress they did with the fill and just getting through there, it's, you know, bravo, they're doing a great job.
Getting out of the ground is.
Yeah, it's huge.
Those lights are cool.
Yeah, the lights, it's gonna look amazing.
I mean, you can start, you can see it taking shape.
Yeah. I can't wait for the drone image.
Mm-hmm, very cool.
Anything else, Mr. Dorsey? Mr. Crocker?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Mr. Bond?
Yeah, I emailed you last Friday with a draft letter concerning a project notice of application that we received in the county. It's a project that's located out at the end of Sunny Slope near SR3, and so, the point that I made in the draft letter, which if council is comfortable sending it, and I did hear from councilmember Ashby that she was supportive of sending it, we would be requesting something similar to the Bayside plot, where they paid a SEPA-based mitigation fee for city intersections that are affected by traffic from that project, and it's expected that the project, which is, would use Sunny Slope and feed into Old Clifton Road, and so all of those projects that McCormick has a pro-rata share, is part of the McCormick Woods impact fee, we need additional matching funds to cover the difference between what McCormick is putting up and what it's actually going to cost to do that, and this seems to be a project that's in the proximity, and would generate sufficient trips to at least to get us some money towards putting together a design for that corridor, and so, I don't know if you have questions about it, or if everybody's comfortable sending that, I don't think we need a motion or anything unless, although I don't want to revisit this next meeting, so perhaps you wanna contact me offline.
Sounds good, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Bond?
That's all.
Ms. Gates?
Nothing for me tonight, thank you.
It's Floyd.
Nothing for me, thank you.
One more thing, I will say that that comment letter, I believe it's, comments are due on that project on the 5th of July, so we don't have another council meeting to talk about it, so I think if I hear from a majority of you that says, send it, I will go ahead and send it.
Do we note it?
We can just hear from any of you, go ahead and send it.
I'll let you send it.
Okay, at this time, we'll move on to our second citizen comment period. Any comments this evening, please?
Excuse me, hello, Jerry Harmon. I was wondering, and I don't know street names very well, but when you're coming in on Pottery, and you turn right, and you come up, there's an automotive place on Sydney, there are now three stop signs that make it very, very nice to get across there, and that's another place where visibility and people are coming very, very quickly, so.
Lippert, we see Sydney, Lippert.
Sydney and Lippert.
Yeah, okay, Lippert, okay, that sounds familiar.
Keeping it that way as well.
I would support keeping it permanent, it really does make it a lot harder.
Right, because I've come close there, just people, you can't see with the brush there, and coming from whatever is down that Sydney, it's scary sometimes how fast people are coming through that intersection.
I think we're gonna make that permanent as well.
And also, is there anything planned? You have so much traffic now coming on Sunny Slope, and people trying to pull out to get on three, to head toward Belfair.
Yeah, that's, that's state and.
Well, I know it is, but is there anything, to me, it's something that just for safety, it's really rough to get out there at certain times of the day, and people, when they have a hard time, they start doing dumb things.
Yeah, I mean, there's that acceleration lane to head.
Right, but it's still the, I don't know, it, I've seen some people do some pretty dumb things to get across with all the traffic that is now, there's no time that you go to Belfair, that there isn't traffic on that road at a pretty consistent clip.
There's nothing that I've heard of to improve that.
Okay, thank you.
It's also a Lake Flore.
Same thing.
That's Lake Flore, SR3, and I would say right to state, which we've done from the school district perspective, so.
Yeah, okay, because it's.
Yep. All right, we have all of our citizens in attendance speak tonight, thank you.
Way to go, Mayor.
We do not have an executive session, so at this time, I will adjourn this evening's meeting, thank you all.